Good evening and welcome to the August 19th, 2019, meeting of the Merrimack School Board. If you could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two is public participation. Anyone from the public that would like to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
What the status on this discussion was a couple of months back probably now, on the Wing Kids program you had. You had the guys here talking about it and everything like that, and the board had your vote to accept something or other. And Andy expressed some misgivings, people expressed to him about the cost of the program not paying for itself. And the board was kind of like, "Well, we'll discuss that at a later date." I was kind of wondering where that went to, with that program I'm talking about here?
Could you clarify a little, because we're not understanding what you're saying to.
Okay, well, you had a couple of months ago, maybe at the end of the school year, you had all the people here, the heads of the departments, I guess, were here, and you were talking about the different programs they represented at the school program. And you had the one about the Wing Kids, the program you had for them that are...
Preschool? Are you talking about preschool program?
No, I don't know what grade, I guess any grade, preschool, whatever it was. But the kids that were, needed special help in some way or another. And you had the program discussion about that, and Andy brought up that the program, you know, people have expressed misgivings to him about the program not being paying for itself. And the board had some vote on that.
I think it's the preschool, just to clarify on that.
Okay, preschool then?
I think it was about determination of rate for tuition.
Right, and they, I don't know, I think there was an action to come back to say, to evaluate what it was and to come back to us at a later date and say whether the tuition was appropriate for what it was.
There you go.
But there was no timeline on it.
There was none.
Just waiting here, I guess, huh?
Yes.
Okay.
I remember what that was.
It took a little digging to figure out what we were responding to. So on that note, if there is no other public participation, we will close public participation and go to item number three, which is the consideration of a proposal to construct a permanent concession stand at Merrimack High School. So I invite to the table Shawn Powers, Dr. Rob Wolf, Jennifer Savikas, Jennifer DeFaleese, and I believe on the agenda but may not be able to make is Kip Jackson. Okay, so we will let you start, and welcome, and thank you for coming.
Hello. Thank you for having us. My name is Shawn Powers. I have the honor of sitting on the board for the Merrimack Football Program. And we are... Hello. Oh, good. My name is Shawn Powers. I live at 7 Berkeley Street in Merrimack, and I have the honor of sitting on the board for the Merrimack Football Program. And one of the projects that we have going on is we're trying to construct a new concession stand. And did everybody get the printout? Great. So our goal, to replace the existing small, very old, literally falling down, starting to come apart, mouse-infested concession stand.
Shed.
Shed, yeah, that certainly served its purpose. So we're looking to, you know, replace that stand with a very safe and sanitary and secure concession stand that will reside in the same spot. We're trying to, you know, get it as large as possible, and that's what the very beginning of the design phase of that. And its goal is to be a multipurpose concession stand that would be constructed and managed in a way that would allow any school program to use it for fundraising for their program, as well as any community service initiatives that came up during that. And one of the key factors here is we're, underlying the word "ask," we're looking to not ask the Merrimack taxpayers to pay for anything for the concession stand. We're looking to have it completely privately funded, and then hand over, you know, possession, ownership, of course, to the school system because it's on, you know, the high school property. So, you know, today's initiative was to meet with the school board, and again, thank you so much for having us and introduce the concept and gain your support so we could press forward with that. That's today. You've got the, you know, you've got the list of everybody involved, and then, you know, we have some next steps that we'd like to take once, you know, you folks decide that you're on board with it. So we could, you know, get with the town, get with the state, understand code, and start to actually, you know, really, truly build a plan.
Okay. On that note, I know when you brought, you know, the documentation that we have for tonight's meeting, things that you were looking at were having, you know, obviously the billing plan is in our packet, which we appreciate. That is, again, via donation that this would come, so... But really, what we're looking at right now is an exploratory. Is the board open to this idea of having a donated facility come into our possession that would have more fully functioning utilities? And with that, I think there are next steps, once we decide that this is something we're on board with, that will have to happen, you know, things like, that would be so premature without us having knowledge of the project. You know, things like, you know, engineering studies and site surveys and any type of building permits, obviously. When we're down to that area where money would become involved and the donation would become, I guess, tangible, we would have, because it would be, just from the looks, over $5,000, a public hearing would have to take place at a future board meeting if this is green-lighted. And with that, we would actually accept the donation. With that, we would then start moving forward with the project. But right now, this is the first, this board is hearing of it as a body, so, you know, having the idea vetted needs to be important. And just what we're looking for out of it is, I think, where we want to make sure we know what this project involves. So with the bullet points that were provided, power, you know, things are already taken care of. The power is already there. There is a water source, but I think it's not where it, the way it was because of the new bleachers.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes, yes, it's not there.
So, but it's in the neighborhood.
Yes, I think so.
And I think that, I might defer to Matt to kind of, if you can clarify that.
Yeah, there is a source of water we could tap into, definitely.
Viable. And then, like, the gray water is, I think, an area where it would have to be explored based on things like site surveys.
Correct.
So things that until we know what's going on would be premature to determine. And then gray water being the other stuff that goes down the sink. And then, you know, other considerations I think that are in your presentation are, you know, that we have, that are appropriate are locking cabinets upper and lower, if different groups are using it for different things. They have their supplies stored. Our district never has a ton of storage, so having it right there, I think is not only easier, but probably more practical.
Very much so.
Yes. I think you're...
It's in my house now.
I think a lot of parents are storing it themselves and bringing it on game day, and that's a hardship for many families.
It's worth it.
Absolutely. And then, you know, looking at things like, can it be done via solar power? So I know that's in the presentation as well. So with that, I don't know if you had anything to add?
No, not really. I mean, this is the very beginning.
Absolutely.
This is right at the very beginning, you know, trying to go through the proper channels and make sure that, you know, we do this right.
Definitely. So with that, I will open it up for questions. So I see Andy, I see Naomi, so far.
So, thanks. Having seen the current stand and what you're proposing is really good. There's, I don't see the downside here. But there's a concern I have, and it's related to the turf field effort that we did at the last election, the vote where it was not voted by the taxpayers. Part of that was based on a promise and an intent to offset the costs through fundraising and donations and things like that. And one of the things that voters had concerns about was, it's well and good, like, when you have these, you know, telethons or whatever people commit, but when you actually go to collect the money, do you get enough to cover it? And how much will either taxpayer have to pay? In your situation, you're trying to do everything completely off of private donations. My concern is, is that... I just have this expression, "Show me the money from..."
Sure.
...Jerry McGuire.
Sure.
It would be hard for me as a board member to allow this to, you to break ground and stuff unless you knew you had the funds to finish it. Because what you don't want is to start and then find it half-done and no money to do it. Now, I know the football program likely can get the money, but it's something you have to sort of be prepared on when you get to that point in the process.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
And I think to that point, I'm just going to clarify one thing. We wouldn't even greenlight until we had, we would accept the donation before we would, before the building could even be green-lighted. So I think the goal is to see if we're on board with the idea of this project. And then, once the money is there, they will come back with a public hearing, knowing what they're asking for, and then we would greenlight once the money is accepted then.
I understand, but I wanted to make sure that you understood that...
Hundred percent.
It's a road we started traveling down that we're going to go down again.
Yes, sir.
But I just wanted to make sure that we knew for this. This is a smaller scale, and maybe a good learning opportunity for us when we look at something bigger like the turf field, which has a lot of folks that are interested in making that, so.
And I understand your concern, and I agree with you 100%. I'm involved in many, many, many projects, and, you know, you gotta have funding in place before that can start, for sure. And this will be, this will certainly be a phased approach, you know. So, you know, phase number one is really going to be, you know, working to get the donations to start the exploratory process, because, you know, you have to have, you know, have to have site plans, you have to have building plans, you have to have all the resources in place before you can even understand what the true cost of it's going to be. So that's the work, you know, leading up to that. So, you know, we'd secure those funds to do that first phase of it without, you know, even talking about breaking ground. And then, when we got to a point where we understood what the true costs of that are, then we could, you know, secure, you know, the financing, the funds, before, you know, any construction would start. That's for sure. So yes, I agree with you 100%.
Right. And just the other thing that I want to bring up is, as we've also talked about, like, the SAU Sped Building that we're doing, one of the things that people have had a lot of requests about is when it's actually constructed, try to keep all the work from contractors within town.
Yeah.
So that the money stays within town.
Right.
So it's just something to keep in the back of your head as you go through this.
Yes, sir.
I mean, you may get a quote from somebody cheaper two towns over, but at the end of the day, it's people in town.
No, I think we always wanted to make sure it was Merrimack-funded.
Yes, for sure.
Keep it town-wise.
For sure, yeah, absolutely.
And that's definitely in your documentation, that local builder is, you want prefab or ground-up construction, then, you know, open to other ideas, but...
Absolutely.
I think you're leading with that, which is exactly what we're looking at.
Absolutely. And the engagement of the board and the engagement of the community on this would be amazing, because, you know, I'm a firm believer in many brains is better than one brain, so any ideas that anybody has, you know, we're completely, you know, grateful for anything that anybody brings to bear. But yes, local contractors, for sure. And I've already engaged a couple to, you know, to start that process of trying to understand what, you know, estimated costs would be.
Yep, sure, okay.
Okay. Naomi?
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you. It's really helpful to be brought in at this stage so that we can think about it, consider it, get our minds around some of the ideas, and give some back. One thing that occurs to me is, in regard to the turf field. Now, these are separate projects, and they may need to be separate, or they may be more usefully collaborated on. But either way, you may want to consider not ending up trying to fundraise simultaneously from the same people and talk to each other about the approaches to fundraising that each group is taking as far as that goes, because I believe that that's still being pursued actively, and so you, yeah.
The football team really is not doing anything with the turf, you know, and, you know, we play on it five times a year, so it's really not a concern of ours. We use the concession stand, it's a huge moneymaker for the team. That's what we're more concerned with right now. So turf would be left for, like, soccer, lacrosse. They use it way more than we do.
Yep.
Even if you don't...
Absolutely, yes.
That makes sense, and I hear that you're saying that they're separate in that way. That said, you might still find that you're approaching the same people for fundraising.
Agreed, agreed. That's sage advice, 100%. Thank you so much.
So with that, it would, I think, be positive if we feel that this is the right thing for the district, and we are encouraging the, you know, just the moving forward of this initiative, that maybe we should feel like if a vote is appropriate to endorse, endorse the project at some point. If we don't feel we're there yet, we don't have to. But if we feel that it would help them to get out into the community, knowing that the board is behind this, I think it might help with getting a productive conversation on getting the project moved forward. Cindy, do you have questions or comment?
Would you want a motion?
I would be open to it, absolutely.
Sure, I will go ahead and make one.
Well, thank you.
I think it's a great community project. I fully support it. I think it's a perfect example of why Merrimack is such a great town when you start to pull community resources together...
Amen.
...for the betterment of everyone. So I would like to make a motion that we support the initial efforts of this project, of getting, I would say, what would be the better way to say it?
You support the grassroots initiative for the Merrimack High School concession stand project?
Okay, I support the grassroots effort for the Merrimack High School concession stand.
Is there a second? Seconded by Brandy. Any questions or comments to the motion? Naomi?
I really like the idea, and I intend to support it. I wonder if it shouldn't be clear, though, given that it's at this initial stage, that we're supporting the exploration of this? I don't know that without more information, we can wholeheartedly say that we support it.
The sign-off of the construction.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes, 100%, yeah. This is exploratory.
So if I could just answer that question, I think what this motion would help us do is really, in a way, to authorize Matt to partner with Shawn and the team. Without that, you know, we probably wouldn't want to commit Matt's time and energy to something that the board wasn't wanting us to at least initially support. So really, what this does is it allows us to say that this is something the board really wants us to initially explore, and then it would really make it more possible for Matt to engage in that way. So that's really why this would help, I think.
Andy?
I'm definitely in support of that. I just want to make sure that, I know sometimes when Matt gets involved in some of this stuff, sometimes he pulls in resources outside of the school district for advisory and stuff, and if there's any monetary impact for those sort of resources, I'd like that to be brought to the board so we know. It's one thing to get your, you know, stuff this in your brain, your experience. It's another thing if you need to have somebody come in and offer some design or input or something into the process, so.
Yeah, I've already had some, I did a little preliminary, and I talked with Steve Keach. He's our civil engineer owner of Keach &amp; Odstrom. And he's given me some, just free advice on gray water issues and how to take care of that, and something that I hadn't even thought of that. But if there's, but it is going to get a little bit more involved, and I'll let you know what that potential cost may be.
Because if there's cost, we as a board need to decide whether the district pays or whether it's something that somehow gets covered through donations or something, because, I mean, it's... I know it's ultimately going to be ours, but if you're looking feasibility and issues and stuff, we just need to, we just need to make a decision as a board, right?
Fair. So with that, we'll put the motion to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None? The motion carries 5-0-0. Thank you, and we wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations on a great idea for the district.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
We appreciate you coming. Thanks so much.
Thanks.
We are on to item number four, which is the consideration of district options relative to the signage on or near Madeline Bennett Lane. At 4:15 this afternoon, we received a hand-delivered letter from the Chair of the Town Council. With that letter, there was tangible expectations being asked of us that would require us to make decisions with no time to really reflect on the content of the requests. With that, I move that we table item number four, and we will hold a special meeting on this very agenda item on Monday, August 26th, at 6:00 PM. I will entertain a second, seconded by Naomi. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None? The motion carries 5-0-0. This item has been tabled until our special meeting on the 26th. Item number five is the status of the development and implementations of the data governance plan, and we welcome to the table Director of Library and Media Services. Did I get it right? No. What is your title this year?
Director of Technology and Library and Media.
Director of Technology and Library and Media.
It's a little long.
We've evolved it in your whole time here, so I'm very sorry. So Nancy Rose, welcome.
Thank you. And you can also add Security Information Officer.
Lucky you.
Is that the right?
Yes.
Information Security Officer.
There you go.
So... And you are the assistant, yeah, you're the deputy or the alternate or...
I'm the alternate or deputy.
We'll go to iParty and get you a couple badges for that.
Thank you. I'm Batman, he's Robin.
There you go. Good call.
So what I wanted to do is give you an update of the work that has been done since the passage of the law, because we, HB 1612, and that's the data security and privacy law that was put in place in New Hampshire. And I think it's important to note that this type of law has gone into place in many states across the country. So we are doing the same thing that a lot of districts and a lot of states are doing. One of the challenges in New Hampshire is we don't have a lot of infrastructure at the state level to put into place a lot of the kinds of things that other states may do that they then pass down to districts. So I think that's worth noting, because it has a cost impact for us. So the law went into effect in June of 2018, which is hard to believe, that's well over a year ago. It doesn't seem possible. And so in June of 2019 this year, we had the data governance policy presented here, and it was passed by you, and I appreciate that. Since then, the Merrimack School District, through our membership in COSUN, which is the Consortium of School Networking, which then the state chapter for that is the New Hampshire CTO Group, which is my affiliate organization, joined the Student Data Privacy Alliance, or Consortium, I'm sorry, Student Data Privacy Consortium. This is an organization, it's a nationwide organization that was actually formed largely by Steve Smith, who is the CIO of the Cambridge Public School Districts in Mass, so we benefit from having him close by. This organization essentially helps track and work with vendors on student data protection. And so they, it's kind of strange. So some of them, some of the organizations are joined as states. We joined as an alliance of districts who are part of COSUN, and so our membership covers that. And we're using the same organization that Massachusetts used, which is a legal operation, who looks at the language of terms of service, all the really boring gobbledygook at the, you know, the things that you click through when you're using software, and works with vendors to get them to agree to sign data privacy agreements regarding the data that we have or that we upload with student information. And so that is in progress. That is something that we paid a dollar a student to use and to be a part of. That's an ongoing relationship, but that alleviates me being the person interpreting and deciding whether or not the legal language makes sense or is appropriate. So that's been a huge part of this process. And then, we also have started our data governance plan, which is, it's a template plan, which is a fairly common thing. You see a lot of different organizations use this kind of a template. It includes the data breach response, which is actually specifically spelled out in the law that we have to have that, and also business continuity plans, or how do we maintain uptime? And what is the way that we go about ensuring that we're keeping operations going as necessary during an emergency or like a storm or a power outage or something? I've been working with the schools and the tech educators and librarians and teachers through all the different schools on a inventory of all of the software applications and digital resources that are in use. This is an ongoing process. It is daunting. I was showing it to John today, so you could see the scope of how much we use technology in the classroom, which is a good thing, but it also shows you how much there is to try to keep track of. And so what's involved in that is knowing what we use, where there are accounts that are used, and if those accounts require any kind of personally identifiable information to go to those vendors. If those vendors have signed off with the Student Data Privacy Consortium. If they haven't, is there another way for us to set up those accounts and use that information? So all of it is a thorough review of these different sites, and if they're responsible with student data, if they don't use student data, then it's also just making sure that they're appropriate for education if they're aligned to what we're doing in the classroom. We have purchased ClassLink, which is a single sign-on solution that will allow us to create essentially icons. It's a launchpad, but the real benefit of it for my operation is it allows me to do vetting. So I add things to the ClassLink software as they are approved. So if it's not there, a teacher knows that they either need to get approval or they have to go and look and see if it is in the library that I'm building in there. So this is another thing that we budgeted for last year for this budget cycle, is some way to do the vetting of software, which is a requirement by the law. And it's been a pretty big undertaking, and I'm going to be working with tech educators this week to show them the tool, how it works. But it's going to be a while before it's fully implemented, but it's very powerful. And the nice thing about it is it's a single sign-on, so that once a student logs into it, it's a website, and they can log into it from anywhere on any device. They click on an icon, and it automatically logs them in. So we're not having to remember usernames and passwords across a lot of different applications and websites. We also then have a little bit more control over how those accounts are set up, where we can reduce the use of names, last names, and things that become personally identifiable. So there's a lot of things about it that I'm very excited. The software also has analytical tools in it, so we can start to see how much are things getting used and if we're getting our money's worth. So that's another big thing I'm excited about with it. We have acquired access to a system that will help us with training on information security for staff, on phishing malware, watching out for the emails that try to lure you into giving away your credentials and things like that. So there's a lot of training videos. Training is another piece of the law that was a requirement. So this helps us meet that need, and it's small bits, and it's bite-sized, and the system is actually kind of a standard that's used in corporations and school districts now to help end-users be more able to monitor their protection of information. I don't know if you've heard it or if you just know it, but end-users are actually the biggest vulnerable part of any information system. So, and it's unwitting, and there's a lot to know. So the system will help us train people. We have done a first-round security analysis with a third party who has looked at our systems. We've sat through multiple interview processes to talk about what we have in place and the infrastructure through, you know, like, this kind of system, training, plans that are in place, things like filtering, malware protection, spam, firewalls, you know, security settings. Just a full walkthrough of what it is that we have in place for securing our environment, for our infrastructure, our network, and also the data that we have in place. This will be an ongoing process, so we did an initial review. We're doing things to respond to what they made as recommendations. We'll go through it again. It's iterative, and it helps us build our security as we go forward, rather than one giant fell swoop. And then, we have been meeting at a system level for the last year as a system leader team, looking at our information security systems, the data that we have in the district, and how do we protect that data? Looking at the software that we have in place for managing information, and what can we do to improve those systems? And that's, I think that's been a good process. It's been something that's helped us really evaluate what it is that we need to do to be better stewards of that information. And then, going into the school year, we'll be training with teachers. So I'm still working on how this is going to be done. I think it's going to be frequent, small, bite-sized introductions to what is data, what is student data security or information privacy? What is, what are the laws? What is involved? What do you need to know as a teacher? What's good to know on a personal level? How do we set up systems, or what are the systems that are in place to help us? There's a lot of moving parts to making us compliant or helping us be compliant with this law, and I, my biggest concern is I don't want to scare people away from using technology in the classroom, which I think could be a response. So I, this is a year of learning, implementation, putting forth our best effort, making sure that we're really learning as we go, and then helping our teachers and students learn how to live in this world where we have to really be more mindful of how we use and take care of student information. So that's what's, like, the really, really 30,000-foot view of what has been happening over the last year and a half. And I think in the future, we will look at the data governance plan and that inventory together, but because it's a security-related piece of information, it isn't something necessarily that I would want to broadcast. So that would be something that we would consider, how else to convey that information to the board for your review. So that's what I have, and I'm willing to do my best to answer questions.
I think we respect that you don't want to show your cards on how we're securing data. I think that's exactly what we want you to do, is not do that.
So...
So we're right there with you, and we respect it.
Thank you.
So I believe Andy has a question?
So we should have a conversation sometime about what HPE has done to educate its end-users on the potential pitfalls of sniping emails and things like that. So, well, if you do not play card, do not play card... So, well, if you do not play cards in every, I can share some things that have caught me even, so.
Yeah. No, the tools, the phishing scams are remarkable in how they mask themselves, and sometimes it's just the simplicity. And it's more and more challenging to help end users understand and to be skeptical.
It's to understand and to learn, and that's the thing, and what to look for, the things, even people that have done it, you know, like I've been exposed for years, there are still new ways all the time, so.
It's crazy. Clever. I wish that those brainpower, that that brainpower was being used for good.
For something productive, right? There you go.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we thank you for the update. We never thought you were bored.
There's no time for that.
Yes.
So when this whole thing started, we put it under the guise that this is an unfunded Band-Aid from the state. It would be good to understand as you're going through this, sort of what's costing the district in terms of brainpower and manpower, as well as things that we buy, because there's some things that showed up in the budget of what it really is. Because I think one of the feedbacks that we can give to the governor and other, the state DOE and stuff, is just saying, okay, you've asked us to do this, but just so you know, this is what the taxpayers have had to pay in terms of implementing this. I think that would be, if not for, beyond us, at least for us, to just understand that.
And I think that's a valuable thing that you're saying as well, because it's not that you wouldn't have spent that time to secure student data, that's something you've always had an eye on in your role, but how you have to do that, and, you know, the time that you have to spend to be, you know, I think you spend as much time understanding whether you're being compliant than you are complying. And I think that's a challenge that you face in your role. And I think that what is abundantly clear in, you know, practical New England, especially practical New Hampshire, is we don't have a corporate level of IT infrastructure. So the labor power that you have, putting out what you are, is of great, it's very impressive. It's of great value to the district, but I think that with the breadth of your roles, you know, has that put you in a position where you're struggling to get the rest, the core part of your job done because of this new compliance area? So, you know, as you're going through the budget, I think you're probably going to realize how much time all went into this, if you don't have a good idea already. But I'm sure you have a great idea. But just to know that, you know, the work still has to get done to open up school on day one, on top of what you have to do to be legally compliant. So if nothing else, you know, we love data, but we applaud the work that you're doing, knowing that it is a very big job.
Right. And just another, to finish that thought, so you're right, corporate IT has huge resources to do this stuff, and dedicated people, not only when they develop these, but in an ongoing basis. So one of the things that I, as a board member, would look for is, as you get through all of this stuff, what sort of ongoing expertise do we need to have to make sure that we stay up with the ever-changing piece? And whether we, as a district, need to consider funding a position that we've never had to before as a result of this? Because it's one thing to understand and to implement, it's another thing to then carry it through, through year 10, year 20, and things like that, so, because it's not free.
No. Well, and I think the other, there's a lot to what you guys are saying, and I'm very appreciative that you are aware of the impacts. And there's the knowledge and understanding of what this means, there's the moving parts to being a school district who is trying to use data to the best of our, you know, to be responsible with it, and to not do anything that would injure, you know, endanger students' information, while also helping students and teachers learn as they go. The other thing that's critical, I think, is there's no time that I think this will ever be done, because the, what we do, what we use, what's out there changes constantly, and the tools that are available to us are changing constantly. The software that has sprung out of the woodwork that supports helping vet software and helping to do data privacy tasks is, you know, astounding. And so I appreciate that you recognize that this is definitely a moving target, and it's been a big undertaking. But I think the other thing that's worth pointing out is it was the right, the law is a good thing, and it's an appropriate thing for us to do and to engage in. And I agree that sometimes you say, you spend more time on demonstrating compliance than being compliant. I don't know how else to do it, though. Like, I think that part of it is that you have to show it in order to be able to prove it, and that's a challenge. And I tried very hard to select tools that do a lot for us, not just one trick. And so that's kind of what I'm hoping that we'll learn as we go this year, that what we're putting in place does more, gives us more value than just simply compliance with the law, that we get other benefits from it. So that's one of the other things I'm excited about.
Right. And one of the reasons I'm doing this is because other districts, and I think you know a district I might be talking about, is going through, with all the districts have the same requirements. We're lucky to have somebody like you that understands, that is able to get the resources, like through the board, but also has the knowledge to do this. And I think being able to use us as an example of what we learned to other districts in the area to maybe help them out, it's the right thing to do as well. And so, to me, sharing what's learned in some way and fashion, I mean, you do, you're part of a conglomerate, or whatever word you'd describe it, grouping of districts, but we want every student to be protected, regardless of what school district that they're in. So anything we can share, I think, is important.
That's a big part of the New Hampshire CTO group, too. And that's the organization that joined the Student Data Privacy Consortium. We've also worked very closely with the Chief Information Officer for the, or the Chief Information Security Officer for the state. He's been very helpful in helping us interpret and prioritize what we're working on. And then that group also was very concerned about making sure that the small districts, because that's one of the challenges of the state, is that, you know, there's some good-sized districts, and there's some that are very tiny, who don't have expertise, don't have resources, don't have the knowledge to take this on. And so this helps them as well. And I think it's worth noting, because we're all needing to be held compliant to the same law in the state, once we, once we, once a piece of software is approved and a student data agreement is signed for any district, then that approves it for use in the state. So it isn't that we have to get all of our stuff through the student data privacy, it's sort of everybody's contributing to that database. And so there's a lot of structure that has formed as a result of the law, and our meetings at the state, the monthly meetings used to be maybe about 10 or 12 people, and they've gone to 30, 40. So the growth, the recognition of the need of this structure is huge, so I feel very fortunate to have that. I'm not quite sure what I would do without it, so.
Excellent. Mark?
So I just, not to put too fine a point on it, but I appreciate this dialogue, because if the board remembers, in July, at our July meeting, I was kind of forecasting the way that I was hoping to approach the budget season. And one of the things that I was trying to share is that it's very important to this administration, as it was to previous administrations, and it has always been to this board, that we're, that we're very mindful of the taxpayer and impact on the taxpayer whenever we propose a budget. And I also said that I think it's fair to share with the taxpayer, as you are all doing tonight, just some of the things that impact our, the delivery of the budget that's created. And there are some things that it might not be well-known to the public, just what we must attend to in order to be a certified, validated school district, and also a safe and secure school district, and a school district that does its best to support students. And I don't know that we have always talked about that part quite as much, and so I think that what I appreciate about this dialogue, it is the right thing to do, as Nancy points out, and we are doing it, and we would do it anyway. And it is simultaneously true that cost does come with that. And so I think it's important, as we approach the budget season, that we have an equal conversation about just what those things are, because it could be left to the impression that, you know, sometimes that we're looking for, you know, the top-of-the-line gold standard, and we always want the best for our students, but sometimes what it is, is we're having to pay for things that are required of us by others about whom, or over whom we have no control. So I just appreciate the dialogue here, because it kind of wraps up, or rounds out, the fullness of the experience we have as we begin to put a budget together. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Thank you for coming. Your summer is almost over, but I hope you enjoy what's left.
Yeah, thank you. I can't believe it's that late.
I know, seriously. But I'm ready to kick my kids out July 5th, so I figure I've done pretty well, so.
All right. Have a good night.
You, too. We are on to item number six, which is Paid Lunch Equity, a request for a price increase. And I invite to the table Director of Food Services, Dave Zeki. Welcome, and you're probably also in the middle of it, too, so happy home stretch of summer.
Thanks for having me tonight. Okay. Thank you. As school gets closer and closer, as we approach the September start date, one of the things that we have to do, we have to put together an application for the National School Lunch Program. And one of the items that is included in that application for the state is the Paid Lunch Equity, which, that was a, an item that had been part of the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act of 2010. Basically, it's in place so that it ensures that the amount that we're charging the paying student is equal to or greater than the reimbursement rate for free meals that we receive. So every year, I have to fill out a spreadsheet and come up with the ultimate goal as to what they expect us to be charging, and how I'm going to come across to get that. So it's based on an average of the meals in the whole district, so it's not particularly at any specific school. So what I've done is given Mark a proposal for increase in lunch prices for this year. The, again, the increase is based on the rate of the meals that we serve in October. Every year, they ask us what we had for October in meal sales, and that gives them a general consensus every year, so it's consistent. So what I'm proposing is to increase the price of meals for all levels of schools, 25 cents per meal. It is something that's required by the USDA and Department of Education, so every year we have this little hardship to try to juggle around what we're going to do and see what we can do going forward, so. Any questions?
I think we do. Start with Cindy.
Can you tell me what percent increase that represents, that 25 cents?
So right now, you know, it's probably around a 10% increase from what we're charging last year to this year, depending on the, what level we're looking at. The elementary was 250, we're going to go up 25 cents, so that's 10% of that, 275. Probably a little bit less at the high school levels.
What did we go up last year? What percentage?
Last year, we did not go up at all.
Was it three years ago we went up? It's been a while.
2017, I think.
Seventeen, yeah, that was going to be my question, so we just jumped in with that, I guess.
Okay. And this is something we really, in order to be able to get the funding that we need, we really don't have a choice, and...
It's really not a choice. It's, the choice is, I could, I could choose to keep one level at the same price, but go up higher on another one to make an average come out to that. So I think it's equitable to have all of, all of the schools go up at 25 cent rates.
Okay, thank you.
And my other question, since I was on a roll with the 2017 thing, I know the high school has two levels of lunches, I believe the other one was already 350?
And I'm going to keep that at 350.
Okay.
There's no increase in that one.
Okay. So, I actually, I have one more question, but if I can give it to you afterward, and that is, what's the communication plan, and what do you need from us? So normally, we vote, I believe, on this, and I believe, since the first day of school will be our first, the next meeting, the next meeting other than the special meeting we're going to do. So would you want us to waive the two-week rule and vote tonight?
Yes, please.
Okay. So those are my questions. Andy?
So one of the things that we hear sometimes from parents is that with all, not only are we getting federal assistance to do this, the free, reduced-cost lunch part, there's also all the guidelines that are constrained about what we need to be able to do with healthier foods, you know, lower sodium, higher grain, all that kind of stuff. I know in the past, we've talked about some of those guidelines being rolled back a little bit. Can you share with us where we're at in terms of the lunches that we'll be delivering this year, and what sort of things might be showing back up that didn't use to be there, if there's any changes?
So for the start of this school year, actually July 1st, which if some schools have summer school, they might, they might have lunches there, they're going to roll back the requirement of the whole-grain products, back to where it was five years ago, which we could use 50% of our products could be of regular, you know, white grain, and then as long as we had 50% of the products using the whole-grain rich, we were covered. The conundrum is that over those five years, the manufacturers have come up with some pretty decent products that are really acceptable. So it's hard to say that we want to roll back completely, but does give us options to do certain things, like the tortillas, which are very hard to, you know, get a good whole-grain tortilla, or the rice products, or even a bagel sometimes. Trying to find a whole-grain bagel in different varieties is tough to get, so I have the option there to use some different products, which is good.
Right. The reason I brought it up is because some people might feel that the palatability of the lunches wasn't as good with the constraints. Well, if we're going to charge more now, but yet there might be more palatable things, there might be more variety of bagels, or tortillas or things, is a reason why it's, it doesn't necessarily justify it, but it means if you're going to spend 25 cents extra, at least there might be more things that your student might eat that are on the menu.
Absolutely.
So, okay.
So are there any other questions? Brandy?
I just wanted to go back to what you had mentioned about communication, and is that something that we're going to communicate to parents starting on the first day, or...
So that's, yeah, the question I had, now I think I can answer, because I did the two-week rule, and I just kind of snowballed with a bunch of stuff. So how are we going to communicate the new rates once voted on? Formalities out to...
Well, at least the applications for free and reduced meals go home in this opening packet, and there is lunch prices included in that as well. And we can also, you know, put out a notice of some sort.
Yeah, we could utilize the email addresses that we have for our parents to blast out a little note explaining the increase, and then we could post that on our Facebook page and our webpage also.
Would be, would be able to push it through the app as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Cindy?
I might also suggest that we talk to the leadership team, too, so if there's any, like, come-back-to-school emails coming from the respective schools, that they're consistent with that messaging.
Right. Sure.
Okay. So with that, we should probably entertain a motion to increase the school lunches for 2019, 2020 by 25 cents, and I guess I kind of made the motion, so I'll accept a second. Seconded by Brandy. Any questions or comments to the motion? A waiving the two-week rule, that's also part of my motion. Still good with that, right? Okay, good. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, none. The motion carries 500.
Appreciate that.
Thanks, Steve. Item number seven is the status of litigation relative to the homework protocol. This evening, I'd like to update you on the status of the litigation brought by Mr. Bevel. On June 26th, the Superior Court ruled that the board, and not the legislative body, had and has the statutory, excuse me, statutory power to create, maintain, and change the Merrimack School District's homework policy. On that basis, the court dismissed Mr. Bevel's lawsuit. Out of respect for the judicial process and the possibility of appeal, the board refrained from comment on the matter. On July 29th, 2019, the period for appeal to the State Supreme Court expired. The decision of the Superior Court is now the final decision on this matter. The board takes its responsibility to create, maintain, and review its policies seriously. In fact, that is one of the primary functions of this board. The homework policy is no exception to this rule. Over the course of this year, the board, through its administration, will be studying whether the change in grading homework has been positive, negative, or neutral in its impact. And in the future, we anticipate a presentation that will be made to the board on the findings of the administration. Thank you very much. On to item number eight, which is the determination of the first board meeting in... On to item number eight, which is the determination of the first board meeting in September. And back to regular business, not including our special meeting next Monday. So, I will say that historically, knowing that Labor Day is on a Monday, and the first day of school is on a Tuesday for us, we have, in the last few years, had the first board meeting in September on the first day of school, which falls on Tuesday, September 3rd. And because this room is used on Tuesday evenings, and there's a standing, it might be planning board, I believe, that has this room, we will be in the memorial room, which is across the hall outside the town manager's office. So, the adjacent building across the town manager's office. So, if that works for everyone, we will declare that our first meeting in September, and then we will be back to the regular course of business, with the third Monday being our second meeting of September. We are on to the housekeeping portion of our show, which is the approval of the July 15th, 2019 minutes. I will entertain a motion made by Andy, seconded by Naomi. Are there any edits to the July 15th minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none. Abstain. The motion carries 302, with Vice Chair Gualyumi and Board Member Nunes abstaining. And the August 12th, 2019 non-public minutes, I'll entertain a motion to accept, made by Naomi, seconded by Andy. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries 500. On to item number 10, consent agenda, and over to John. I have to coach myself through that, so. Hello, John.
Thank you very much. We have a lengthy consent agenda with a few nominations tonight. And I'll begin by recognizing Karen Koster-Hoffman, Special Education Teacher, Thornton's Ferry Elementary School; Jenna DeShardens, Science Teacher, Merrimack High School; Mary Elizabeth Haver, Special Ed Teacher, Merrimack Middle School; Michelle Lemire, Preschool Teacher, Master Cola Elementary School; Matthew McGinnis, Music Teacher, Thornton's Ferry Elementary School; Erica McLaughlin-Para, Digital Learning Specialist, James Master Cola Elementary School; Kristen Peterson, Social Studies Teacher, Merrimack Middle School; Deborah Rapsen, Technology Education Teacher, Merrimack Middle School; Melanie, excuse me, Melanie Swazensky-Saddock, Sixth Grade Teacher, Master Cola Upper Elementary School; Bethany Taylor, Digital Learning Specialist, Master Cola Upper Elementary School; and Michael Valinsky, Technology Education Teacher, Merrimack High School.
And I believe you missed Louis Esposito?
Louis Esposito, Special Education Teacher, Merrimack High School.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then, we have a couple resignations. One teacher resignation, that is Tyler Perry from Master Cola Middle School. And then, we have one administrative resignation, that is Linda Hastings, Director of Human Resources. Then, we also have, on the consent agenda, memorandum of understanding between the Merrimack School District and the Merrimack Police Department.
Mark?
If I could just make one, I just want to be sure, I just want to be sure that the administrator is a retirement.
Okay.
Yep, I just didn't, was that, yeah, I just want to be sure that the administrator is a retirement.
Thank you. So, Andy?
I move that we accept the lengthy consent agenda as read.
Is there a second? Seconded by Naomi. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries 500. Item number 11, other. Is there any correspondence? Yes, Cindy, jumping right on it.
Yeah, I have a couple pieces of correspondence. I had a community member reach out to me and asked if the staff at our schools had LGBTQ training, and does the district have a transgender and gender non-conforming policy? So, I'm working with administration regarding answering that question. The second one that I received was another citizen of Merrimack reached out to me and asked if the school districts tested the water this year after the filtration, the PFOA filtration was put in. And then, also asked if the filters are being replaced on a timely schedule. I brought that to the attention of Matt and Mark. Matt responded that the water has been sent to the lab, we're pending results, and that filters will be replaced to maintain zero PFOAs.
Okay. As I mentioned in an earlier agenda item, we did receive at 4:15 this afternoon a letter from the Chair of the Town Council, Tom Mayhan, oh, not Tom Mayhan, wow, Tom Koenig, that goes way back. Tom Koenig regarding Madeline Bennett, which resulted in us having to table item number four. Are there any comments? Mark?
So, I just want to alert the board to one fairly significant change in the way that we're going to have August Academy this year. So, as you know, our August Academy is three days of training, where we bring all of our teams together off-site for three days of intensive training. And we're really looking forward to sharing with the board at our September meeting the nature of that training. But I also wanted to say that because there's a new administration, that I thought it was, we thought that it was important to do something a little bit different this year. And by that, I mean that we have a lot of people at central office who are very important to the operations of the district, who very few people even know. We also have office staff at each of our buildings, about whom it can be said, without them, we really would be in a rough place. And those people, for many, many years, do their work without professional development. And yet, they are often the frontline people to meet and greet, to answer questions, to do all kinds of things that really materially help our day move on. So, as a way to both recognize those folks and to share some professional development with them, I am choosing to close the district entirely on August 27th so that those folks at each of our buildings and at central office can join the teachers that they support on day one of August Academy, hear my opening message, which includes them, and then also have a day of training that will help them in their professional growth for what they do. So, I wanted to share that with the board tonight, because my intent, our intent, is to start the day tomorrow by pushing out a message to the community that says, on Tuesday, August 27th, if you have any business with any of the schools or central office, that we will not be available to you that day, but that we will be ready to go on Wednesday, the 28th. So, if people arrive at any building and see that we're not open, not to be concerned or alarmed, it's actually a good thing. Those are critical people on whom we depend for a lot, and they deserve some professional development as well. We'll have a multi-tiered communication system for communication to people so that there will be multiple platforms for people to learn about this. And in addition, we're going to have an old-fashioned sign on every door of every building that simply says, in case you miss the other means of communication, we just aren't open today, but we will be open for business tomorrow. So, obviously, didn't want to do that until the board was notified. But we think, you know, we take our work seriously, and it's important that people are in place. But it seems like, given some new starts, it wouldn't be a bad idea to honor those people by giving them a little time to have them professionally grow as well. So, that's my comment.
Thank you. On that note, are there any other comments? Seeing none, we will go on. Is there any new business to come before the board? Seeing none, any committee reports? Seeing none. Public comments on the agenda items, the public has left, so we will take a moment to sign the manifest. And I will entertain a motion to go into non-public session per RSA 91-a colon three, section, Roman numeral two, sections A, B, and C. Andy? So, move by Andy, seconded by Naomi. Brandy, how do you vote?
In favor.
Naomi?
In favor.
Andy?
In favor.
Cindy?
In favor.
And I vote in favor. The motion carries 500. Thank you and good night.